The time is 6:00 PM. We will now call this regular public meeting of the Board of Trustees of Umbel Independent School District to order. A closed session of the Board will now be held on the matters contained in the meeting's - I'm sorry, let me start over there. A closed session of the Board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. The time is 6:00 PM. The time now is 7:33 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. Reminder that the meetings of the Board are open to the public but are not a meeting of the public. The Umbel ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The Board receives the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore, lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a Board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item. Will you please stand with me as we honor the Texas flag and the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Moving to our next agenda item, commendations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
Absolutely. Welcome, everyone. It's great to have you here tonight. Friday, April 28th was an exciting night when Elementary and Secondary Teachers of the Year were announced. Our community supports teachers in a very extraordinary way. Thank you to Robyn's Auto for presenting a $10,000 check to our District Teacher of the Year. Thank you to HIRF Jones for presenting a $5,000 check to the runner-up. Additionally, GTS Technology Solutions presented all 10 District Teacher of the Year finalists with a brand-new laptop. Gulf Coast Educators Federal Credit Union sponsored the admission tickets for this event for all 10 finalists and their guests. Tonight's inspiring moment profiles our wonderful teachers of the year.
The winner of the $10,000 cash prize from Robyn's Auto and Umbel ISD's Elementary and District Teacher of the Year is Susan Mitchell.
I cannot - I'm speechless and that's really not my normal setting. So, it's incredible. This is such a great district and full of amazing teachers. And to be voted Teacher of the Year, that's incredible. So at 7:30, my day starts and I have kids coming in and out that need books. They're checking things in, they're checking things out. And honestly, some of them just come for hugs and I am thrilled with that. And then my classes, then I get ready for my classes to start about 8:10 and I'm seeing six classes back-to-back-to-back until 2 o'clock.
Ms. Mitchell is super special at Groves Elementary. She's a librarian that - she really doesn't operate in a silo. She is far beyond her four walls every day. She comes out in the classroom, she partners with our teachers, she definitely loves our students. She's just a special lady. She makes literacy and learning just so fun here at Groves Elementary.
I am a teacher. I'm a classroom teacher and that's who I am at heart. This job, it gives me the ability to do that on a massive scale. My job is not to teach them curriculum. My job is to support the classroom curriculum and extend it out. My job is to provide a safe and nurturing environment for kids to be able to come and feel happy. My job is to allow them opportunities. I provide them with opportunities to explore their own learning, to develop interpersonal skills, critical thinking skills. So for me, the library is the heart of the school. It's a key piece to their education and it's a great place to be.
My message to Ms. Mitchell would be just the biggest thank you possible. She has inspired so many children.
She's had a great impact. She's really like changed the way I've seen reading and she's just making me love reading every time I come back to the library.
My own girls absolutely love her and can't wait to come to the library every single time that they get to. And I know that that's the feeling that all the kids have.
I love how she's so caring and how she would do anything just for us.
It's just a huge thank you for being the person that she is. She's so funny and she makes the kids laugh. So it's just a bright spot in our day when we get to be in the library with her and we just love her. So, I love her. I think she's fabulous and I'm so proud of her.
The winner of the $5,000 cash prize from HIRF Jones and Umbel ISD's Secondary Teacher of the Year is Teresa Aranda.
It's just a whole nother feeling. Like, we have amazing teachers here at Umbel ISD and to be one of the two top, it's just - it's completely out of this world. Like, I don't even have words for it. Like you said, my mom is an educator and so this, like, I can't wait to call her. Mom, guess what? Hurry up, hurry up, hurry up, hurry up! Five, seven, yes. One, three, single five.
So my dance career started at Galena Park. I was a jacketeer for four years and then from there, went on and was a sand dancer, got a full ride scholarship, and then from there, went to U of H and was a cougar doll for a few years. And then went to be a Houston Texan cheerleader for five years and the last three, I was the main captain. I was at U of H and my advisor said, "Well, what is it that you want to do? This is it. What do you want to do?" And I said, "Well, I love dance and I love teaching." Those are my two passions. And so at that point is when I realized, "I want to be a dance teacher. I want to - I have so much passion for dance and I have so much passion for teaching. What else would I do?" And so bringing those together, that's when I realized, "This was my true calling, right here." So I said, "Okay, you know what? Let me try." So I put in my application. Sure enough, Trey Kramer interviewed me and he was phenomenal, super excited about the school. And so he just drew me in just based off his energy. Like, Trey Kramer's energy about Summer Creek was just so inviting.
I was looking for people that had great personalities, lots of energies, and had expertise in the fields that they were going to come to work for at Summer Creek. And Terry met all of that. You know, she's contagious, her background in dance and just her overall philosophy on life. I knew that she would be a person that kids would want to be a part of in a drill team. And looking back 14 years later, obviously, I was right. She's done a great job as our - the drill team director. So I knew that this is where I needed to be.
And so, got interviewed, interviewed, got the position, and then 14 years later, here I am. And I absolutely love Summer Creek High School. This is every dance director's dream, to create their own team, to create the uniform, to create the handbook, all of it.
Ms. Aranda, honestly, she means the world to me. She's like a second mother and a best friend, as well as our director. We come in, I see her throughout most of my day. I have her first period, second period, fifth period, and then seventh period as well. So I'm in here all the time and just spending like the whole day with her, it means a lot. So I really, I'm really grateful for her.
We were so excited to find out Ms. Aranda was Secondary Teacher of the Year. She has been one of the most inspiring and role model influential people, not only at Summer Creek but in our community. And to be able to work under her as her student, as one of her officers, it's really just like a monumental moment, just like for our entire team as a whole and as somebody who's looked up to her for so long. It was so exciting and a celebratory moment for all of us.
This journey has been exciting, rewarding. Every single year, we get better and better and better and better and the bar just keeps getting higher and higher and higher. So having this is just, it's just amazing. It's amazing. We started out with 25 girls, our first year, 25 girls, and now we have 100 girls try out for 60 team members. So it's just, it's rewarding. It's, that's what it is. It's rewarding. I walk in the hallways all the time and one of the other coaches is like, "Hey, how's it going, Aranda?" And I'm like, "Good. How's it going, Coach?" And he always says this, and him and I now, that's what we say back to, "Living the dream. Just living the dream." And that's exactly what he and I talk about here at Summer Creek.
All right. I would like to recognize the stars of tonight's video who are with us tonight. Terry Aranda, our Secondary Teacher of the Year from Summer Creek High School. And Susan Mitchell, our District and Elementary Teacher of the Year from Groves. We are so proud to have them in Umbel ISD, to celebrate them, and I am certain they are going to move forward as they represent Umbel ISD at the Region 4 Teacher of the Year Program. So, good luck to both of you. All right, next. Starting kindergarten is a big moment in the life of a child and their family. Lucy Schultz, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools, and Kristi Urb, Director of Elementary Education, are here to tell us about new ways our families are being welcomed to Umbel ISD.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. So May is always an exciting time. We have some seniors that are graduating, but at the same time, we are welcoming new families into our school. So we are currently in the process of registering our future kindergarten students for the upcoming school year. And so each spring - Rusty, my old - thank you. Got my backup. So each spring, we open our campuses and we have kindergarten round - open houses. We invite our students and families in. And this year, Ms. Urb and I had this idea, but we knew we could not do it alone. So we got the help from a couple of our departments. We went to our Transportation Department. And this year, when our families came to our kindergarten roundup, they got on the bus with their families and took a drive around the campuses. We also got with our Child Nutrition Department, so great help, and they went through the serving line to experience that with our Child Nutrition Team. So those are a couple of things. Thank you, Rusty. So the last thing that we wanted to do this year for kindergarten roundup is, we wanted to develop a Kinder Club. So each student, as you can see in the pictures, got a class of 2036. Can you believe that? T-shirt and a backpack to go with it. It's full of resources and ideas, just to generate some excitement about kindergarten in Umbel ISD. And so we want to share a few of those students with you. We have some special guests to introduce at this time.
So please join us as we welcome a few of our newest Kinder Club members. Mason Lund. Parents are Audra, Keith, and brother Parker Lund. And Mason is a future Hidden Hollow Elementary Kindergarten Student. We also have Amelia Arenas. Oh, she's got it! Parents are Erica Alfredo and brother Sebastian. Amelia is a future Park Lakes Elementary Kindergarten Student. And last but not least, we have Joa Malone. Come on up. Parents are Jacqueline, German, and Sister Joy. Joa is a future Fall Creek Elementary Kindergarten Student. Rusty? All right. All right. So, registration for kindergarten is ongoing, so it is not too late to register. You can register at the district website and join the Umbel ISD Kinder Club. We also want to extend a huge thank you to Jerry Monbarin, Chief Community Engagement Officer, the entire Office of Community Engagement Team, and the Umbel ISD Education Foundation Board members for helping to launch our Kinder Club. They had representatives at every single Kinder Roundup over the past four weeks so that students could sign up and join. We have over 30 elementary schools, so being at every one was a major commitment of time. We appreciate you warmly welcoming our new kindergarten students and young learners. And at this time, we would like to take a photo with our Kinder Club members, the Office of Community Engagement Team, and our Education Foundation Board representatives.
Stop moving. Mason, stop moving.
Thank you to Lucy and to Kristi for all of their hard work starting this program and really welcoming our youngest students to the school district. Next, we continue on with wonderful things tonight. Students who take the PSAT and National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test have the opportunity to receive recognition for their scores. Tong Yu-Dakrit, Director of Advanced Learning and Services, is here to recognize some outstanding
Good evening, Dr. Fagan, Board of Trustees. Umbel ISD is proud to celebrate our 48 students who've been recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation based on their academic performance on the Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Corporation Qualifying Test. Now, students took this test when they were juniors last year and received recognition during their senior year. Umbel ISD's Class of '23 did very well. I am pleased to announce that our district increased the number of students that we're honoring through National Merit compared to 2022 to 2023 by 55%. So in 2022, we recognized 31 students through National Merit, and this year, we have 48 students. Now, our commended students, yeah, absolutely, that's an accomplishment. Our National Merit commended students represent the top 3% of students in the nation in terms of their achievement on the PSAT. These commended students have been recognized on their campus. So let's take a look at the next slide, next two slides here. These are our National Merit commended students, again, top 3% in the nation. And there should be two slides there. Let's get both of those in. Now, Umbel ISD also doubled the number of students who received the very top honor to be named National Merit Finalists. In 2022, Umbel ISD had four National Merit Finalists, and this year, we have eight students that have achieved this honor. National Merit Finalists rank in the top 1% of the students nationwide who took the PSAT. Students, when I call your name, please come up to the front to receive your plaque from our Board President, Ms. Lamont Dixon, and our Superintendent, Dr. Fagan. And then please remain up here for a group picture. I'll start with Emily Hill of Atascoceta High School. Come on up here. After high school, Emily plans to attend the University of Alabama. She'll be majoring in computer science and has been accepted to the STEM path to the MBA program, which is the accelerated MBA program through their honors college. Additionally, I was just told this week that Emily recently received word that she is being offered a National Merit University of Alabama Scholarship. So not only is she a finalist, but she's being awarded a scholarship for her achievement. Our next finalist is Justin Impelman of Summer Creek High School. After high school, Justin will be attending Rice University and majoring in mechanical Next, we have Michael Louie of Kingwood High School. Now, after graduation, Michael will be attending Texas A&amp;M University and majoring in biochemistry. Next, we have Richard Moran from Atascoceta High School. After high school, Richard will be studying aerospace engineering at the Georgia Institute of Technology. Next, we have Rebecca Rhodes of Kingwood High School. After graduation, Rebecca's going to be attending Texas A&amp;M University to major in Next, we have Anastasia Small of Kingwood High School. Anastasia's going to be attending the University of Tulsa and majoring in Spanish and economics, and she's also going to run track and cross-country there. Our next student couldn't be with us tonight, but that is Tracy Wan of Kingwood High School. She is planning on going to the University of Texas to major in engineering. She couldn't be here, but let's also give her a round of applause. And finally, we've got Adam Wolf of Kingwood Park High School. After high school, Adam is going to attend the University of Alabama to pursue a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering. We also want to recognize our principals who are here tonight to celebrate their students. Principals, please stand when I call your name. From Atascotia High School, Mr. Will Focker, thank you for being here tonight. Kingwood Park High School, Mr. Wes Solomon, thank you, sir, for being here tonight. And from Summer Creek High School, we have Dr. Matthew Manny and Mr. Brent McDonald. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight. Hey, congratulations, finalists, and all your hard work. We look forward to celebrating your graduation on either May 26th or 27th at NRG, and we look forward to seeing your continued success.
Parents, y'all can come up here. Nobody up here. Most nobody in your bikes. So you're pretty safe. Come on, take pictures. They will look this way, smile for a minute, or for two minutes maybe. So look straight. Trust your eyes. All right. It's my turn. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Yeah. Awesome.
And Dr. Fagan, if I could, I would love to be able to excuse our students tonight. The several have AP exams tomorrow that they have to get ready for. So thank you guys so much for being here.
That is so impressive. That is such a unique feat to be in the top 1% in the country of all students their age group. There are a couple universities in there that kind of cleaned up. Martina said, "Roll tide" over there. Yeah, there were some Aggies in there too. Yep, Donnie's like calling me out on that. Okay, finally, we do have superstaffers tonight, so I'd like to invite Ms. Jerry Monbarin forward to introduce them.
Okay, this is our last Super Staffer Award announcement for this school year. And as it has been all year long, this is, our sponsor is Water Burger. And so we appreciate Water Burger finishing out the year for us. They are not here, so I have asked our Education Foundation Chair, Deborah Rose Miller, just to help me hand out the prizes. So being honored tonight as our Elementary Super Staffer is a Special Education Teacher from Deerwood Elementary, Amanda Viasana. Come on up, Amanda. As Amanda makes her way, also her Principal of Deerwood could come on up. Ms. Donnie Davies, come on up. And then if you want to hand it to them. So as they're coming up and taking pictures, let me tell you a little bit about Amanda. In her first year at Deerwood, Ms. Viasana has formed critical relationships with students, staff, and families. She has taken over the entire ICS/Resource caseload while her team teacher has been on maternity leave. Her students will tell you that she is super-nice, likes to have fun with kids, and helps them to learn new skills every day. And she balances all and always with a smile. Thank you, Ms. Viasana, for supporting all of our Deerwood family. Being honored tonight as the Secondary Super Staffer is J ROTC Senior Army Instructor for Umbel High School, Sergeant Major Watkins. And joining him up front is the Umbel High School Principal, Mr. Cosby. So Sergeant Major Watkins has demonstrated an admirable devotion to Umbel High School through his exceptional service and dedication. His unwavering commitment to his responsibilities and willingness to assist others has significantly impacted the school and our students. As a devoted member of the J ROTC program, he has volunteered countless hours to help around campus. His students hold him in high esteem and his passion for teaching and mentoring serves as an inspiration to all. We are fortunate to have someone like Sergeant Major Watkins in our community and appreciate his outstanding contribution. his outstanding contributions to our school. Congratulations. Being honored as our support superstaffer tonight is Angela Hefner, PMS Data Analyst from the Data Quality Department. And joining Angela up front is the PMS Manager, Sanwana Flores. So let me tell you about Angela. She has worked in the educational field for 33 years and joined the UMBLE ISD family during the 21-22 school year as the PMS analyst within the Data Quality Department. In a short period of time, she has made a huge difference by being a very detailed-oriented person that effectively analyzes PMS data before submitting to TEA throughout the school year. She exhibits tremendous integrity, cares deeply about her job, and is a kind and patient person who loves to help. Angela will be retiring at the end of June and will be deeply missed by everyone that is fortunate enough to interact with her. Congratulations, Angela.
What a great night. I love celebrating our teachers, our students, our superstaffers. Thanks to everybody who makes all of those programs possible. That concludes our recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. The next item is public comment. The board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so following the procedure outlined on the agenda. The board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than one minute. Remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure, at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents, by employees, and by citizens may be heard in accordance with board policies. Each of these processes provides that if a resolution cannot be achieved administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of our district policies on public participation in meetings and filing complaints are available on the UMBLE ISD website. Our first speaker for this evening, Eric Goodwin. Okay, we'll move on. Next, we have Holly Matherly.
Good evening. I'm Holly Matherly. My son is Titan Matherly. He's a third grader at Green Tree. And intellectual freedom is something that's very important to me and my family. I want to say thank you to the board for protecting those freedoms. I'm aware that there were 23 books challenged this year, books with important themes like sexuality, LGBTQ issues, and poverty. The fact that parents like me can choose to expose their children to a wide variety of ideas while others feel they can protect their children tells me that our current system works. Thank you for protecting our intellectual freedoms.
Thank you. Next, we have Cindy Wilson.
This is a history lesson and a love of education. I'm Cindy Wilson. I'm the daughter of Welkem Wilson Sr. He was University of Houston Chairman of the Board for five years. My brother Welkem Wilson Jr. is on the Texas Board of Higher Education and the Alamon Foundation. We are descendants of Antoine Severn Sharpio. He arrived here in the mid-1800s. UMBLE ISD is considering the purchase of land on Westlake, Houston Parkway, and we understand has been designated for a new middle school that will be built in that area. The land was acquired from the son of Antoine, Edward S. Sharpio family, and we're requesting the school be named Sharpio Middle School. E.S. Sharpio was on the board of the Harris County Common School District, number 35, five years in the early 1900s. Then he was elected the first UMBLE ISD school board on May 29, 1919, and served June 4, 1923. His brother Ernest Sharpio was also served on the board.
Ms. Wilson, I'm sorry, we have one minute for public comment. Do you mind sending us? You did send us an email with the information, is that correct? Yes, a letter? Yes. Okay.
So that's a request from the history of the family and history of UMBLE and all the history of everything. We love it.
Thank you very much. We will move on to comments by individual board members. I'll begin with Ms. Parker.
We got a super light start tonight, so I am going to defer my time.
Thank you. Mr. Sitton.
Yeah, I'm going to try to be real quick because there are a few things I want to say. You know, we talked about the National Merit finalists up here. Junior student from K Park, Alice Early, made a perfect score on the ACT. I don't know if y'all have seen that, it's on the front page of the website. I mean, people talk about rigor, we doubled the number of National Merit finalists. I don't know, I've talked to Mr. Kramer about getting something out about the number of college credit hours that we're, our students are earning. It's amazing what's happening there. In June, in June, we'll be talking more about the election, but while we're here, I want to congratulate my colleagues, Mr. Scarfo and Mr. Holmes, on their victory. Again, we'll celebrate in June, but I do want a special shout out to Ms. Morrison for her eight years of dedication on the board and her 40-plus years of service in education. A couple other things real quick. Also want to congratulate Mr. Grabowski, look forward to meeting him for the first time, and then all those that ran that, you know, putting yourself out there takes a lot of courage, a lot of guts, a lot of money, and, you know, hats off to every one of those that ran. Sports action this week. Kingwood, Atascoceta, Summer Creek baseball are in the second round. Kingwood's at Strake Jesuit. Atascoceta hosts Pearland Thursday night, and Summer Creek plays Clear Falls. Kingwood, Atascoceta softball are in the third round. Kingwood plays Pearland. Atascoceta hosts Deer Park Thursday night as well. We also, we won't be back together until after graduation, so let's see, we've got Sconzo Early College on the 25th at the UMBLE Civic Center. Atascoceta at NRG on the 26th at 8:00, and then All Day on the 27th at NRG. Summer Creek at 9:00, UMBLE at 12:30, K Park at 4:00, and Kingwood High School at 8:00. And that, I'm probably missing something here, but for the sake of time, I will end it right there.
Thank you. Mrs. Morrison?
Well, I'll defer a lot of my comments till our last budget meeting in May. So also, for those of you that had a chance, if you weren't working at the polls or whatever, you did get to go to the Fine Arts Festival this past weekend. Absolutely outstanding, so, but I'll talk later.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holmes?
I'm going to go ahead and defer as well, but I do want to just say this. Thank you to everyone that voted. I want to say congratulations to Mr. Grabowski as well as Mr. Scarfo. This was, I think, one of, again, these local elections are very important. Thank you to everybody that supported. I want to say, again, these elections are important. Thank you, and I think that's all I have to say for tonight.
Thank you very much. Mr. Scarfo?
Thank you, Madam President. Let me just start off by thanking our speakers who came. Appreciate your comments and what you had to say. And also want to shout out to Mr. Robinson at Kingwood High School. He was selected as the All-Graitor Houston Boys Swimming Coach of the Year. So that's great, yeah. You can clap. And also, our Teachers of the Year, thank you for your service, and congratulations to you. Again, great, National Merit Scholars and the finalists, all those kiddos, great job, the ones who got to be here this evening with us. And just to add on, because I had Ms. Early on my list, too, as Mr. Sitton said, a perfect 36. Just so you know, to put it in frame of reference, the class of 2022, only 0.25%, that's a quarter of a percent, not 25, 0.25% of all students taking the test scored a perfect score in the United States. So I'm sure it's kind of the same, so she's in rarefied air, I got to tell you. So hats off to her for doing that. And Mr. Beatty, congratulations to you and your team. It was finally put up there on the website for getting the Association of School Business Officials Certification of Excellence in Financial Reporting, and that was only the 37th year in a row, so. I'm glad you're keeping it up, so that's great. And again, congratulations to everyone who ran in this last cycle. It is a lot of time, work, money, effort. Congratulations to Mr. Holmes for his victory, and Mr. Grabowski. And I just want to just take a moment, just on a personal note, I just want to say, you know, my heartfelt thanks to all the many volunteers who worked tirelessly on our campaign. You know, they succeeded in getting our message out to the voters across our district. I mean, it was a real team effort from start to finish, could not have done it by just alone, of course. And I'm humbled by the level of support we receive from district voters, and I'll continue to work tirelessly as a trustee for all constituents of our community, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. And, you know, I can't begin to know all the people who came out to support our campaign, but I'd like to connect with you, so you can send me your friend requests on Facebook or reach out to me on my website, robertscarfo.com, be happy to hear from you. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Well, first, I'd like to say congratulations to Mr. Grabowski, Mr. Scarfo, and Mr. Holmes. And I'm also going to keep it short. Happy Teachers Appreciation Week. As a former educator, I know how hard our teachers are working out there, and I feel you, so just wanted to make sure we took an opportunity to say Happy Teacher Appreciation Week, and that's all I have. Our next items, comments by the administration. Dr. Fagan?
Well, the year has flown by. It's been a great year. Our teachers are out there wrapping things up. We're AP exam time, STAR time, final exams are coming, 3,000 handshakes for me in a couple weekends, and, you know, it's just a really great time of the year, it's a super busy time of the year. I do want to say thank you to Jerry and her team. Boots and Bling, I thought, was a fantastic success. The way that we honor our teachers, a lot of places I go, people reference Boots and Bling. They say, you know, "We have these fundraising events, but they're really not that fun because you have to dress up, and you have to do all this and da-da-da." We should do what UMBLE ISD does. And so Jerry's sort of creating space in the universe for rethinking what that sort of fundraiser should look like. So that was a very successful event on the heels of a huge prize posse. So that foundation produces like none that I have ever seen in the fundraising and supporting innovative teaching, and so hats off to you, Jerry, and your whole team. You guys make it look so easy, and we know it's not. So we thank you for that. It is also the tail end of the legislative session, and we're waiting to see what the final bills will look like and what the lay of the land will be as we go through our financial future and set down our budget for next year, and we're hopeful that we can be generous with our employees because we know that that's what makes the difference in UMBLE ISD, is the quality of our staff. The people that you saw on the video represent thousands of people that we have, and it's, I jokingly say, but sort of really true, it's always Teacher Appreciation Day in UMBLE ISD because we really do genuinely appreciate our staff every single day. But I have to say this, our PTOs and PTA's this week, they really step up their game, and if you haven't seen the stuff on Twitter, you should look at the, all the different stuff that they're doing for our teachers all week long. Our principals do a good job of sharing that out, so I want to say thank you to all of those parent volunteers who are such an integral part of everything we do in our school district. They truly are our partners. We work with them to educate their children, and they work with us to celebrate our teachers and other staff members, so thank you. And then finally, today, I started my day off great with Mr. Phipps and his team as we celebrated the partners in our community that employ our special education students who are 19 years and up, and the students actually today, they spoke and they thanked their employers and their teachers for getting them job skills, and it was just a really wonderful event showing how the community supports us and we support the community. So thank you, Mr. Phipps, for the invite and the great ceremony. I loved, one of my favorite parts was the bus drivers were there who support these students in taking them to their job sites, and the relationship between these bus drivers and these students, you could just feel it in the room, and it was really nice because we see that all the time, but you don't always get to celebrate bus drivers because honestly, we just need them driving buses all the time. So it was great to have them there. So thank you, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. We will now have updates from our board associations and committees. First committee is the Advocacy Committee. Mrs. Parker?
We are 20 days from signed eye, the last day of session, and on April 20th, Ms. Lamont Dixon and I traveled to Austin and advocated for our mental health wellness clinic. I'm wearing green today because it's mental, May is Mental Health Month, Awareness Month, and we were able to meet with Charles Cunningham, Senator Creighton, Representative Bell, and just a really good time, but I can't wait to see what the final legislation looks like for education at the wrap of this session, so back with more details soon.
Thank you. Mrs. Morrison, Audit Committee.
The Audit Department is completing their safety and operational audits, and then our Audit Committee meets on May 23rd.
Thank you. Building and Planning Committee, Mr. Sitton?
Yeah, so everyone should have gotten the minutes, I think, on Friday. Didn't hear any questions or concerns about that, but some of the highlights, Kingwood High School floodgates were tested and passed. Kingwood Park High School and Kingwood High School third gym CTE expansions should be completed. I always hate to give a date, but September, October is what we're shooting for, and I think we're pretty good on that one. North Bend Elementary is on schedule to open in August, and then we've got, we got an update on the middle school 11 site plan. The property that was spoken of earlier tonight is kind of an elongated property and where that will situate, based on, I think there's a meeting on the 25th with the county about a road easement that we're trying to get a variance on, which will help us determine where that school can fit on that property without having to split it up or do some different things. So that's coming up. We're scheduled to close by the end of the month on that property. There's four items on the action items. We've got an architect selection, we've got a couple change orders, and that's about it. Oh, okay. So Mr. Scarfo was asking about making sure people understand what we're doing at Kingwood High School. We're doing the same thing at Kingwood Park as well. It's a facelift on the front because we're doing the, we're adding the third gym on the back, a new entrance back there for the extracurriculars, athletics, fine arts, and so forth back in that area. So redoing a facelift on the front so they both match, a little more curb appeal there, so you're going to see a lot of steel going up. Some of the other things that you probably have Some of the other things that you probably have noticed, um, uh, the, uh, around the auditorium or Performing Arts Center, I'm old school, so Performing Arts Center, uh, some of that brick is a little different color, but that will be stained to match. Uh, that's part of the waterproofing, uh, flood prevention that's going on there. And again, the gates, the gates, a lot of the gates are put in already, and those have been put in, been tested, uh, and passed that test. Uh, at Kingwood Park, you'll notice that the circular drive in the front is all closed because it's getting a facelift on the front, uh, with a new entrance to the athletic wing, an auditorium on that end. Third Gym is on the back side of that, uh, along with a new, uh, culinary arts studio. And, uh, Kingwood High School's getting a nursing program wing on the back of it. And Kingwood Park is also getting a, um, update on their criminal justice program. So both of those are going and rocking and rolling right now. Uh, they got started a little bit late. We had some hiccups with, uh, electrical lines and, and flood planes and all this, but we've got those worked out, and, uh, we hope to have both of those jobs finished September, October. Um, UMBLE High School still has a lot of work going on. Uh, so there's, and all the multipurpose rooms, uh, at our elementary schools, uh, you'll start seeing those opening up as we go along throughout the next year. Uh, so a lot of work being done. Uh, Jason, your team are doing a fantastic job. And Billy, your team, making sure that, uh, we have bond money available, uh, as, as we get through that progression of projects. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Board Superintendent Evaluation Committee, um, that would be me. Um, we just started the loose conversation about the superintendent goals, but it's an ongoing conversation. So that will continue. Finance Committee, Mr. Scarfo.
Uh, thank you. Uh, we are having our next Finance Committee meeting, May eighteenth. And then, uh, following week, on May twenty-third, Tuesday evening, we will be back here. That is the right date, right? Oh, okay, twenty-third, yeah. I thought I heard somebody say, okay, yeah, the five twenty-three. Uh, so we'll be here, and it starts at six PM. So, uh, good, this will get, we'll get a little deeper in this next go-round. I don't know how much more information we're going to have on the revenue side, but we'll, we'll do our best. But it'll be a little deeper than we did at the, the very first one in April. So please, uh, join us and join us online, uh, you'll get some good information. Thank you.
Thank you. Education Foundation, Mr. Kertschoffer.
Foundation had an amazing April. On the fourteenth, they awarded three hundred and twenty thousand plus in grants to UMBLEISD educators. It's the largest amount ever awarded in the prize posse giveaway day. And then on the twenty-eighth, all of us were there. I think most of the room was there for Boots and Bling. Uh, Deborah Miller and Jerry and your team, um, amazing. Where'd Deborah go? She left? Strike that name. No, but thank you to all, uh, who came to the fun event, especially my thanks to the sponsors. Um, Centerra Financial, Lawrence and Pat Carrier Foundation, um, Insperity, and the Teacher of the Year Awards, we, we celebrated tonight, it's amazing. So, congratulations to all that were nominated. Thank you.
Thank you. Kingwood Super Neighborhood Council, Mr. Holmes.
Yes, no updates.
Thank you. Action Items from Closed Session. Item four A, Personnel Recommendations. Mr. Kertschoffer, do I have a motion?
I move that the Board approve the Administration's Personnel Recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, seven zero. Item four B, Student Expulsions. Mr. Kertschoffer, do I have a motion?
I move that the Board approve the Administration's Recommendation of Student Expulsion as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, seven zero. Item four C, Twenty Twenty-three, Twenty Twenty-four Contract Renewals. Mr. Kertschoffer, do I have a motion?
I move that the Board approve the contract recommendations for employees for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year as presented in closed session in the contract listing, and further authorize the Superintendent to provide all notices and take all actions necessary for the same.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, seven zero. Item four B, Withdrawal of Proposed Termination of Probationary Contracts. Mr. Kertschoffer, do I have a motion?
I move that the Board approve the withdrawal of the proposed termination of the probationary contract of Tiki Hamilton and authorize the Superintendent to provide all notices and take all actions necessary for the same.
Second.
Do I, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, seven zero. Item four E, Termination of Probationary Contract. Mr. Kertschoffer, do I have a motion?
I move that the Board approve the Superintendent's Recommendation to terminate the probationary contracts Tiki Hamilton, Kelly Culver, Quinilla Tatum, and Nancy Jabadi in the best interest of the district and authorize the Superintendent to provide all notices and take all actions necessary for the same.
Do I have a second? Mr. Scarfo seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, seven zero. Item four F, Proposed Non-Renewal of Term Contracts. Mr. Kertschoffer, do I have a motion?
I move that the Board approve the Superintendent's Recommendation for the proposed non-renewal of the term contract of Thomas Canick at the end of the contract term for the reasons stated in Board Policy DFBB. Further designate the manner of hearing to be a hearing before the Board and authorize the Superintendent to provide all notices and take all actions necessary for the same and any hearing requested pursuant to the same.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, seven zero. Moving to item five, Our Consent Agenda. Item five A, Approval of Minutes for the Regular Board Meeting Held on Tuesday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Consent. Item five B, Approval of Minutes for the Special Board Meeting Held on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Consent. Item five C, Approval of Goods, Professional Services, and Non-Construction Services exceeding fifty thousand dollars in the aggregate or twenty-five thousand dollars individually. Consent. Item five D, Twenty Twenty-three, Twenty Twenty-four Construction and Construction-Related Purchases. Consent. Item five E, Budgetary Transfers and Amendments. Consent. Item five F, Bond Fund Transfers and Amendments. Consent. Item five G, Tax Refunds. Consent. Item five H, Board Authorization of Inter-Local Agreements. Consent. Item five I, Approval of RFP number two zero two-one dash zero zero three R, Supplies, Equipment, and Services for Students with Disabilities. Consent. Item five J, Approval of RFP number two zero two-one dash zero zero five R, General Merchandise. Consent. Item five K, Approval of RFP number two zero two-one dash zero zero six R, Educational Service Consultants. Consent. Item five L, Approval of RFP number two zero two-three dash zero one, Charter Motor Coach Services District-Wide. Consent. Item five M, Approval of RFP number two zero two-three dash two six, Paper Products, Child Nutrition Services. Consent. Item five N, Approval of RFP number two zero two-three dash one zero two, Services, Repairs, Maintenance, Installation District-Wide. Consent. Item five O, Approval of RFP number two zero two-three dash one zero three, School Safety Products and Services. Consent. Item five P, Change Order Number Two, KHS and KPHS, New Gems and CTE Additions. Consent. Item five Q, Change Order Number Two, Multipurpose Rooms, Group One. Consent. Item five R, Change Order Number Two, High School Athletic Improvements Project. Consent. Item five S, Purchase of Approximately Two Thousand Six Hundred Eighty-three Acres of Real Property. I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you, I need that dot to be a lot bigger, I was thinking.
As everyone, as everyone in the front row.
Okay, thank you. Purchase of Approximately Two Point Six Eight Three Acres of Real Property Located on Old UMBLE Road in UMBLE, Texas. Consent. Item five T, Architect Selection for Park Lakes Elementary, Meandering Trail. Consent. Item five U, Student Attendance Areas Affecting Autumn Creek Elementary School, Groves Elementary School, and Wood Creek Middle School.
Pull.
Okay, Mr. Kertschoffer, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve consent agenda items five A. What do we pull?
U, so through five T.
Five T.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, seven zero. We're returning to our first pulled item or our only pulled item, which is five U. Um, do I have a motion? Do we do the motion first?
Yes.
Yes. Second? Okay, any discussion, Mr. Scarfo?
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Fagan or maybe Dr. Brown, could you just maybe, uh, I'd like to have a little bit of understanding. I mean, I, I could read the item, and I know it says, well, you know, minimal, uh, impact for this zone versus, uh, and particularly, even more so than, than the Groves, but with Autumn Creek, um, Elementary. I guess I'm just kind of looking at the level of confidence of that this won't become, uh, a, a big deal in terms of, um, the number of students that eventually are there. And can any of that property become, go back to being used for multi-residential, uh, uh, multi-unit housing in terms of apartment complex? I know it, right now, they say, well, it's going to go from commercial to residential, so overall, you know, we can only have this many, uh, plots of land, plots of land, I'm sorry. What, what are the chances, can that change? And I just, like I said, I, I want to just understand what, what potentially could happen with Autumn Creek because that's starting to get to a point, um, where we could have, you know, issues attendance-wise. And I, you know, I don't want to see us ha, end up having, you know, relatively brand-new school with, uh, you know, five years from now that we have to, uh, have portables or whatever. So, I mean, that's just my, that's my general question, if you can just kind of give us the thumbnail of, of, okay, why should, you know, the, not so much me, but the community who is impacted by, in that area, why they should feel comfortable and confident that, okay, this isn't going to be, uh, a big deal for them a couple of years down the road? Uh, because I did hear from some, uh, community members that were concerned that, um, even the way things are now with, uh, you know, students getting bused there, who shouldn't, uh, be so. And, and I don't know that that's the case, I, I'm just reporting. Uh, so, um, I know you kind of look surprised. But, um, yeah, so that, that's really where it comes from, and I just said, well, let me, let me ask so we can, you know, you could hear.
I'll start, and then, uh, you guys can fill in specifics. So, we're constantly looking, because we're a fast-growth district, we're constantly looking at potential land pieces that have not been developed where no one lives, and making sure that they are appropriately zoned because when people go to purchase land or move into an apartment, we want them to know for sure where their children would be going and not be disappointed because we then move it around. So, uh, there are two vacant pieces of land. One, that is currently in the Groves but not boundary to the Groves. And so we are making that adjustment tonight so that that vacant piece of land will actually become part of Groves. And Groves, uh, the, the enrollment is coming down in a way that they can hold. And PASA tells us, like, this plot of land with this development on it will yield this many elementary students, this many middle school students, this many high school students. So then we take those numbers and we look at the campuses that we have. And, um, and so the Groves will be fine with that piece of land going to the Groves. The second thing is a piece of vacant land that appears will be multifamily, and we have those numbers. Autumn Creek is our, our, one of our lower enrolled students, or campuses, it has fewer students. Ridge Creek is a very high-enrolled campus. And so currently, that piece of land is going to Ridge Creek, which would overcrowd them again. And so therefore, our analysis, again, vacant land, no one lives there, is that it would be a better fit for them to go to Autumn Creek because that campus can support the additional enrollment that will be generated by this property, um, as we understand it. So, I know Terry and Roger worked really closely with PASA about the details. So if you just want to share any of the information you have from them on that?
I would just share the current enrollment of Autumn Creek Elementary is eight forty-four. And so we built the campus for nine fifty. And then, uh, PASA planning factor, so we've, we've looked at the number of units that are, we're going in, into these. And, um, like for apartments, PASA does a point three eight factor for per unit. So you just have the total number of units in an apartment complex, and in, and in UMBLE, it's point three eight kids will come out of that as a whole. And, um, so for that, it was, um, approximately, uh, fifty-five elementary students, um, that would be moving to Autumn Creek in the future, uh, away from Ridge Creek Elementarys.
Is there much in terms of, uh, potential growth in that Autumn Creek area?
There's not a lot of additional growth.
So in terms of new?
That's correct, there's a few north of the Beltway in the Sunset Ridge. There's a couple of small pieces of property that has, that will have houses to go on them. And there's only a couple of sections along, um, the, the Beltway in which it, it could turn from commercial use, um, to apartment complexes, but there's not very many of those open pieces of land within Autumn Creek's, uh, boundaries, um, to overcrowd them in the future. That's PASA, that, that was not concerned that there was going to be a number of students, a excessive number of students at Autumn Creek Elementary in the future.
Yeah, I, I, I guess my, my feeling is with PASA, they don't live there, those residents do. I mean, even like what happened with, you know, Lowe's pulled out, so now all of a sudden that land became available, uh, correct, for, uh, yeah. So, that's my concern, i- is, are we going to be at a, you know, a couple of years, four years down the road, are we going to be at that point where now we're pulling in a bunch of portables, you know, temporary buildings? And, um, I, you know, I'm, I'm asking the question, that's all. I'm not challenging your, your.
I think that Autumn Creek's current boundary will, will not overfill that campus, which is one of the reasons we want to boundary more in because Ridge Creek is full, and so it would overfill them. Um, and so, but I want to say this, temporary buildings are always a possibility in a growing neighborhood because districts that don't use temporary buildings, they build for peak enrollment. And then when you, what ultimately happens is what we call plateau enrollment. And then you end up with tons of, of vacant space in a school, and excess capacity is very expensive. So, we prefer to build to plateau and manage peak, and you've seen that all over the place. I mean, Wood Creek had seventeen hundred students, um, and now it's back to its thousand. You know, we do that, and we do it kind of intentionally so that we're maximizing, uh, our resources across the district and not overbuilding.
Also wanted to add that, um, on that prop, on that, on that stretch of land, if you will, east, uh, the property east of, of the elementary school and west of the, um, uh, the Home Depot that, that they ended and put in apartments, that, that property is on a floodplain, is undevelopable. So there's not going to, there's not an opportunity in that space, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct, the land that's south of the Beltway, e, west of the, uh, current Autumn Creek campus, going over to Woodland Hills, that entire area is a Harris County floodplain that can not have development.
It can't be developed at all, so, so there's not going to be any surprises there. But there are a couple, couple little spots, little spigots of land that, on the other side, that could potentially be developed, correct? But not, not in a, not like a land tejas, huge development type situation.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Holmes?
Just two questions. One, can you explain for the community what is PASA, the company?
Population and Survey Analysis. They're the, the company that we hired to do all of our demographic work for us. We've, we've used them for the last several years. Um, they are, uh, they've, they have been very accurate with their numbers every year. Uh, at snapshot in October, they're in, in less than two hundred students out of forty-nine thousand that they predict for us every year. And so, I think at the, the last, of the fifteen growing, largest growing districts in the state of Texas. Texas, 10 of the 15, I think, the last time that I spoke to them, use PASA as their demographer for that. And we'll have a new one of those reports that are coming up. They'll begin one for us in August that will have a report to the board probably in the month of November.
Second question.
Yes.
So Dr. Fagan, if you could, because I know I'm going to get probably several of the board members will get a question on, I know in the past, we've involved the community, right, in some of the redistricting and rezoning, questions and challenges and proposals. Why do you think we're not doing it now? If you could explain that as well.
Sure. So when we have little pieces of land where no one lives, there's really no one to reach out to. Sometimes we've had, when we did New Lakeland, we had a little area, and we literally reached out to individual families and said, this is what we're thinking of doing, and explained it all to them. But when you're talking about vacant land, there's really no one to involve in the conversation or send letters to that say, we're going to re-boundary your, where your home is and where your children go, which is why we're trying to be proactive because it is upsetting to families who think they bought into an area and they're going to attend one school, then they find out, no, it's going to be another school. People don't like that. And a lot of people buy homes specifically for a particular campus. So we're trying to be good partners in that, be very transparent and proactive in managing this growth as it goes.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Sitten.
Last question, and I think we talked about this in building and planning as well. When we talk about as, as areas grow, new schools are built, and kids end up going, in the past, they might have gone to two or three different elementary schools. So in this case, in this case, with the adjustments of a couple small pieces, correct me if I'm wrong, it really aligns those pieces of property, elementary, middle, and high school, as a feeder pattern instead of going separate directions and then coming back together, correct?
There's a lot for that, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. And also, you know, like even with the Lowe's to the multifamily, I mean, a developer can change their mind at any point, so you always have that variable as well. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. There are no action items on tonight's agenda. Next is our information items. Item 7A, U.S. Department of Justice CO COPS Grant School Violence Prevention Program. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Item 7B Intruder Detection Audit Report, Mr. Perkins.
The Texas School Safety Center conducted an intruder detection audit pursuant to updated legal requirements. Twelve schools were reviewed. Three findings were identified across all campuses reviewed. All corrective actions have been completed at this time, and further detail has been provided to the board in executive session for the purposes of safety and security.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Our last item, 7C Financial Services Report is a monthly administrative item. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item?
No questions. Mr. Beatty's been waiting all evening to get these questions.
Moving to our closing items, are there any topics for future board business? Mr. Holmes?
Yes, I would like to add a future board meeting, a discussion regarding board committee assignment procedures.
Okay, I'll have to get a consensus of the board to see if we would like to put that on the agenda. You said board committee procedures?
Yeah, board committee assignment procedures.
Assignment procedures?
Re.
Yeah, yeah, I guess typically we would do it at the, prior to the June board meeting, but since we don't know who would be the board president, then we need a new procedure. Is that what you're getting at?
That's what I'm getting at.
Okay, so I need a consensus. Mr. Sitten, are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Scarfo?
Can, Mr. Holmes, can you give me a little bit more, what exactly?
Can we, I don't, can we deliberate? I don't know if we can.
What, I mean, what the agenda item would be exactly, just?
Just the current, the current process, when we changed our officer election process, it changed how this whole committee selection process is going to be instituted. So we need to discuss it based on the election that just occurred.
You know, so typically, and tell me if I need to stop any minute. So typically, with board committee assignments, there are three board members that would work prior to the board meeting where we are sworn in in June. But we don't know who the board president is going to be. Therefore, I guess what you're asking is for us to create a procedure to rectify that because currently, we don't have that. So we would either have to do it after the June board meeting, but we don't know because we can't have a meeting prior to when we don't know who the parties are.
Since that was part of the board operating procedure when it got changed last November or whenever it was, wasn't that part of the, of the change?
We did not discuss board committees.
We made no changes to that particular procedure. It was merely the selection of board officers, not the selection of board committees.
Well, that was a huge oversight then because.
Huge oversight, yeah.
You know, because.
Okay, so are you okay with us adding that to the agenda? Is that something?
Okay.
Okay. Mrs. Parker?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yes, what, so are there any other topics for future board discussion?
Yes. You good?
I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Kertschoffer. Yes, go ahead.
Don't forget me.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I'd like to add to a future board meeting, a discussion on board comments on our, you know, do we need them on a regular basis? I just want to discuss them, put it on the agenda.
Okay, one second. So board comments, like when we have our comments?
Like we have them every week.
Regular.
I want to have a discussion about it.
Okay, I'll start on this end. So you brought it up, Mr. Holmes?
Here, I'll help him out. Can I help him out?
We need a consensus.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I'm open to it, absolutely.
Ms. Parker?
Most certainly open to discussing it.
Okay, Mr. Scarfo?
I'm not open to discussing it because public comments by the board is, by board members is important, and we only meet regularly on a monthly basis, so.
Most school boards don't have it.
We do.
We can't deliberate, gentlemen, we can't, we are not deliberating. Okay, Mr. Sitten, are you open to discussion?
Yeah, I'm open to discussion.
Okay, that doesn't mean we're changing anything. It's meaning we, I'm okay with adding both of those to the agenda for the June board meeting. Board committee procedures, I'm sorry, board committee procedures. Yeah, I think that needs to be added to the budget workshop agenda so that we can have that information in advance. And the board comments on a regular basis, since we'll be sworn in that day, I think it's a good time to, since we're swearing in board members, to have it at the June board meeting.
I have a problem, guys. Ms. Lamond Dixon, are we looking to have the discussion at the budget workshop or the June board meetings? We do have an intervening board meeting coming up in May for the next step of the budget And we can bring it however the board wishes to do at whichever meeting.
Cool, let's just say at a future board meeting, and then I will get with you, and we'll put it on the calendar.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. The time is now 8:50 PM. I'm sorry, let's back up. Are there any other topics for future board business?
Hold on.
Okay. The time is now 8:50 PM. This meeting is now adjourned.